Good evening, and welcome to the Trumbull Board of Education regular meeting on Tuesday, July 28, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. Please stand for the Fudge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and rights. Thank you. Our correspondent, Mrs. North South.
Yes, we had 10 emails during the period since the last board meeting. Heather Miller wrote to us about a curriculum for building anti-racist system. David Weitzman reminded us about purchasing the "Hate Has No Home" here signs for our schools. Sarah DePinto, who sent us eight suggestions for Trumbull High School's reopening, she would like to see four days in school, one day distance learning. Lara Walden would like more feedback from the system and from the Board of Ed, and she suggested that the Board of Ed toward a building as a student, sit in a seat and wear a mask. She also reminded us of the poor air quality at Hillcrest and the heat issues we would be facing in all the schools that don't have air conditioning. Michelle Barone found our reopening plan lacking, and really lacking when it went into distance learning. For distance learning, she suggested that the district set up Zoom meetings where we share our future work and updates. She also hopes that tonight, the new superintendent will be announced under personnel. Monica Terry suggested that the Board of Ed be more consistent at Board of Ed meetings with their masks. Erin Morelli worried about anticipated class size at Jane Ryan Gray Marie. She's worried that we might get some last registrations from the new housing complex. Dana Meisner wants to be sure that during Phase Two and Three, we have teachers in person in their classrooms in Trumbull facilities doing their lessons and not from their homes, which she gave us many reasons why it didn't work effectively. And Carrie Richard changed her mind now and wants to go to full distance learning in September. So that's all our communication for this period.
Okay, thank you very much, Mrs. North South. Okay, public comment is next, and our first person is Jess Sintron Henry.
Okay, she's on her way in, sorry about the delay.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I'm just on my video. Okay, hi. So let me toggle back for a second, sorry. My name is Jess. I have two kids in the district, a fourth grader at Jane Ryan and a seventh grader at Madison. I had a whole different opening plan earlier today, but that changed after seeing the parent Zoom session email that TPS put out. So I'm incredibly happy to see that they will be open to hearing more in-depth feedback from parents and will be answering questions. This type of open communication and dialogue is something that I hope becomes more of a norm here. I hope my next point becomes moot very soon as well, but just in case it's not on the radar, I did want to say that I was frustrated to learn that plans were submitted to the state without much teacher and staff input. Failing to survey staff and then discuss the pros and cons of distance learning that occurred in the spring, to learn from that data was a big mess. And then to again neglect hearing their voices when administration was planning for reopening models is a disservice to our kids. How can a plan be created without comprehensive input from the people who actually have to implement the various models? This goes beyond a reopening committee. Failing to take into consideration a better representation of the professional advice of the people who will be in the classrooms, providing support services, and interacting with students and parents daily is concerning to me as a parent. Gathering more data prior to plans being developed would likely have changed the scope of remote learning in the plan that was released. There's a major need for more synchronous learning and more social-emotional connections. Even with relatively independent kids, distance learning in our house was just not ideal. And I want to be clear, this wasn't specific to just Trumbull. It was challenging everywhere. But at this point, I wanted to be different. There is still time to get feedback from the teachers and staff, make changes, and plan for solid PD in August with an emphasis on rolling out remote learning differently. We owe that to our kids and to our educators. I realize that none of this was planned or facilitated by you as the board, but I know that you have the ability to continue helping us to open up some more proactive and effective avenues of communication prior to schools opening in September, especially with a new superintendent starting soon. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lisa Newland.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, hello, my name is Lisa Newland. I live at 81 Teller Road. When remote learning started in March, I wrote to all of you and our superintendent and assistant superintendent stating that I was worried that there was no synchronous learning and the plan didn't seem fully developed. And I understand it was a pandemic and we were all in a rush, but it never really seemed really evolved, at least for us. What we were doing was in distance education, it was more like correspondence school. Everybody said be patient, this was new, yet here we are six months later and still not a lot of communication regarding what the distance learning plan will look like. What was put into play in our plan only said it would be better than this spring and still no daily opportunities for live interaction, which is the Connecticut State Department's of Education and Columbia University's Best Practices for Districts to Follow when Providing Distance Learning. I wrote to each one of you begging for this in April. I saw my kids suffering, and because of my own education, I know what best practices for distance learning looks like, and I did not get much response. Finally, they did optional live classes where if two students showed up, we were pretty lucky. I'm not negating that people didn't work countless hours on this, but the end result was still a failure for many of our students, and the best practices for distance learning weren't followed. We know at some point this year, we will all have to utilize distance learning, whether it's a hybrid, people choose it, or people are quarantined, yet I don't even see discussions on our agenda about this. We have not brought in professionals to help us. We have a director of distance learning who's pretty much on her own, and she's never implemented an entire district learning plan before. The hybrid plan calls for no synchronous learning. It said assignments will be completed independently. The full remote plan said maybe three times a week, and we'll do better than in the spring. If you have a better plan, it has not been communicated to us at a time when parents have to make some really tough decisions, and we're in need of this information to make the best choices for our students. Yes, there's a pandemic, however, our job as parents and educators is to educate our students. A hundred years ago, people were educated in multiple grades in small buildings or schoolhouses, and things changed with the times. The times are changing, and we have to change with it. I was told that synchronous learning couldn't take place because of the privacy laws, although that doesn't seem to be the case in neighboring districts. They're letting legal advisors and no out-of-the-box-thinking director of children's education instead of actual educators. Other districts chose to figure it out and educate using best practices, and there are ways to do it. Every single lesson plan these teachers have need to be translated to a model that can be delivered either in person or online. It's a lot of work, yet we are only giving them a few days to plan and train, and we are letting all our technology integration specialists go, well, most of them, and expect our media specialists to do all of this. I can't be an electrician if I'm trained to be a plumber. We are cobbling together the bare minimum, and we need to start putting together a program that will work, no matter how we deliver it. For one easy example, if I, my daughter has not had one live conversation in French since March, but somehow she passed French III. How is that possible? Do you think she's ready for French IV? Now she'll have to spend half the year catching up when all she was doing was sitting home. So it's really not fair to them. I'm imploring you to hire experts, bring our technology specialists back, put together a great program, and we have to start listening to everybody and creating input from everybody. We have questions and concerns, and our kids are suffering, and I personally am having so much trouble choosing to send a distance learning or school or anything with just the outline for a plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Patricia Kelly.
Hi. Hi, my name is Patricia Kelly, and I reside at 15 Gibson Avenue. I'd like to start expressing how important the education system is to the entire town of Trumbull. Without it, there is no attraction for young families to move here or stay here. Personally, it is the single most important factor that attracted my family to move from New York, and I know of many others that feel the same. However, what we're seeing in the past few months with the massive deficit and the lack of the town council to truly fund the Board of Education the way the children deserve, all I see is the beginning of a decline and a diversion of priority. Who cuts technology specialists out of a budget in times like these when we need them more than ever? There's no excuses in that. The parents of this town are practically begging for transparency and communication these past few months. The lack of both continues to be a big issue and insulting in many ways. Seems the only way we get answers is to make an issue of it on social media. And since this pandemic began in March, Trumbull has been absolutely subpar in comparison to some of our neighboring towns in regards to distance learning. As of today, we still have not seen a quality distance plan set forth to provide the parents for the upcoming 2021 school year. We are a few short weeks away, and the reopening plan did not provide any specifics as to how Trumbull will implement an actual learning plan. It did not provide parents with any help as to how they can make any of these choices work for them. We know very well since March that there may be a second wave in the fall. To me, that's a big red flag to hunger down and figure out a plan, because we may be in this situation for a while. The lack of effort on the part of the Trumbull Public School system is also affecting the mental health of many children. Some talk about it, some stay in silence, and the long-term effects on our kids and town will be far greater than any short-term financial savings that you have made a priority. Stop playing with the future of our children and focus on this town, the future of this town. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Barker.
Madam Chair, Mr. Barker doesn't appear to be here, so we can move to the next speaker.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Nick Banks.
Good evening, everyone. Well, my name is Nick Banks, and I'm a Trumbull High School teacher and a member of the Trumbull Education Association Executive Board. I'm reading the following statement tonight in place of our TEA BOE rep, as she is not available for tonight's meeting. As we begin to open our school year in the middle of the COVID-19 pandemic and continue to deal with its emotional and physical impacts, safety needs to be a priority for Trumbull Public Schools for the benefit of the Trumbull community as a whole. As your largest group of employees, your teachers' safety and successes will depend on the standards of the district's reopening plan. Given those factors, we would have liked the opportunity to review and ask questions about the plan before it was shared with the community at large over the weekend. Now that teachers have read the plan, there are concerns about the lack of concrete safety requirements for attending Trumbull Public Schools buildings in person this fall. In order to be safe returning to school, teachers are requesting the district establish stricter requirements on social distancing, mask-wearing, room conditions, and other safety protocols. Connecticut is not even at Stage Three for opening state yet, and all the other public and private institutions are operating under very strict safety protocols for COVID-19. It should not be safer to go to the bank or the grocery store than for students and staff who attend school. Please strengthen safety requirements and remove loopholes in the reopening plan on social distancing, mask-wearing, room conditions, and other safety protocols before school is back in session. We would appreciate your immediate attention to this very urgent matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Lahaney.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Amy Lahaney. I'm the parent of a third grader and fifth grader at Middlebrook Elementary School, and I'm also the president of the Middlebrook PTA. I'm speaking tonight on two different issues. One is the budget. When the budget had passed in June, there was a lot of discussion that that was a preliminary budget, and that that budget would be changed throughout the summer and amended as we needed. However, we're coming to the end of July, and we have not spent any time on the budget since it's been passed in June. I'm asking that we revisit that budget and really take a look at it and make the changes that we need to with the current climate with COVID, and also with the other cuts that were taking place. In addition to that, I'd also like to talk about the enrollment numbers, particularly at Middlebrook Elementary School. It would be really helpful if the enrollment numbers and presentations could be put in the packet that's posted online prior to the meeting so that parents would know that we could speak on it completely. I'm not sure what our current numbers are and if that third grade class at Middlebrook has gotten that one more student that we needed, but I'm here again tonight to ask that if we haven't, that the board seriously considers any way adding another class to that section based on the history of Middlebrook and the increase in enrollment throughout the year. The other thing I'm asking is that we take a look at the enrollment numbers for those parents who choose to do distance learning this year and balance our class sizes based on that so that one class isn't significantly lower in enrollment based on the distance learning decisions than another class. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathy Champion.
Hello, my name is Kathy Champion, 39 Undercliffe Road. I'm speaking tonight in favor of synchronous lessons during a potential hybrid and/or distance learning plan for this coming school year. I think children spanning from grades kindergarten through grade 12 benefit from synchronous learning, especially when it is used to teach new material. Students can learn new material directly from their teacher. It allows opportunity for real-time question and answers. It allows the children to see and interact with their classmates, and it provides some level of normalcy in this time of severe disruption. I read in the reopening plan that there will be an opportunity to have up to three live lessons per week, but I strongly ask you to consider increasing that amount to at least daily and ideally more so that each student has the opportunity to learn directly from their teacher in a deeper and more meaningful way. We are facing unprecedented time, and we need to continue to provide the quality of education that Trumbull is so proud of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chen.
Yes, it doesn't appear that Mr. Barker is in attendance tonight.
He's not here. Correct?
He is absent.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that is the end of the public comment, and now we go to the superintendent's report. Thank you, Mr. Chen.
Thank you, Mrs. Tifanelli. On Friday afternoon, the district forward to the state of Connecticut its initial reopening plan. I say initial because many superintendents will need new guidelines and protocols will be issued that will assess state plan changes. In fact, although we handed in the plan on Friday afternoon at 5:00, on Monday it changed. Okay, so we're doing that right now, particularly the learning component with distance learning, hybrid learning, and the actual what we've had in pass with one-to-one live people, okay? Secondly, and related, yesterday, I met with the Fairfield County Superintendents at Kanan High School with Governor Lamont. He was there for about an hour and 15 minutes with us. It was very productive, it was a good session with about 12 superintendents in attendance. It really was a fruitful dialogue that ensued, but it was disappointing in that just three hours later, he unveiled some new approaches, particularly with not so much one-to-one live, but maybe hybrid. So we're still going to assess, remember, this plan evolves, okay? And we may change it. Today, we tweaked them, we'll do it again tomorrow. But also related to that, we are going to have on Friday at 10:00 a Zoom virtual learning session. It's really informative. It's something we call a listening session, where the sub-chairman of the committees will be there with myself, Mrs. Tifanelli, I think Mrs. Tesaro will be joining us, but there'll be other people there to just listen to what parents and the educational committee have to say as far as input. We're looking really for some feedback to add to that. And again, we'll take it all in and we'll tweak when necessary, as long as it's in compliance with the state Department of Education's protocols and guidelines. Key to starting school is looking at our staffing, and I know Dr. Wood is going to talk about that tonight, in fact, responding just by chance to one of the parents who's talking about enrollment, and that we have made changes on the budget since the budget was passed, okay? But we have several openings remaining, but the three I want to talk about to give you a gauge as to when we will move forward. One is the business administrator. As you know, Al Kimar is going to want to have her job, but he has an interim. He had posted his position, closed the posting, and will be interviewing early next week. You have, I think it's five applicants that will be interviewing, and hopefully we can hire somebody then they can transitionalize with that. Agroscience, Mr. Cicero, she goes retiring for the, I think it's the third time, but I'm fine being there. We will be higher shades, but he has done a great job in coordination with the hot tool, making the agroscience a very viable program throughout the state. We will, we have six applicants we'll be interviewing early next week, and we should have some of them do that. What we're doing with the interviews, I had got in the board, the chairman of the board to see if you want to interview, because they're going to send me the final, too. Okay, I will make a recommendation. If you want to interview, I will get up to you. Don't, then we'll just move forward and hire. The last position is a difficult one. We have one elementary principal posting out there, but we're waiting for resignation from one of our principals who hasn't received yet. She's gathered information, digesting it, which she should do. We encourage her to do that. We encourage her to talk to TRP, teaching time board. I've had conversations with Mr. Dubus on it. He's had conversations with attorney's attorney. So we're moving forward on those three key positions. Any questions on the status of anything else that we want to have answered? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll be heading onto the board chair report. First, on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank Dr. Elizabeth Osko of Nez-Zeck for the exemplary level of professionalism she demonstrated throughout the superintendent search process. Her experience, sound counsel, and direction provided all of us with a clear path to our selection for a superintendent. Thank you, Betty. Now I'd like to call upon Mr. Care.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to add an item to the agenda at the top of the agenda, that item being to appoint a new superintendent of Trumbull Public Schools.
I need a second.
I can second.
And Mrs. Petiti, second. Okay, all in favor? Let me go down the list so I can ask. Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Scott Care?
Yes.
Tim Gallo? Tim?
You're muted.
Tim, you're muted. Tim?
I'm sorry, I am in favor.
Okay. Marie Petiti?
I'm in favor.
Jackie Norso?
I'm in favor.
And Lieutenant Tifanelli, all in favor. Okay, thank you for doing that, and now to Mr. Ward.
Yes, Madam Chairman, I would like this time to make a motion to approve Dr. Martin Semmel as the new superintendent of schools of Connecticut as of September 14, 2020.
I need a second.
I will second that. Jackie Norso.
Jackie Norso, second. Okay, let us all take the vote. Mike Ward?
Yes.
Scott Care?
Yes, in favor.
Tim Gallo?
Yes, in favor.
Marie Petiti? Jackie Norso?
Yes, in favor.
Lieutenant Tifanelli, yes, in favor. Congratulations. Okay, by unanimous vote, it's my pleasure to announce. I mean, I'd like to say a few words before he speaks. He is going to speak. Dr. Semmel's expertise and accomplishments are noteworthy. His enthusiasm and knowledge of current educational best practices will serve our district well. His starting date will be Monday, September 14. And now, Dr. Semmel, you'd like to say a few words, please come to podium. Thank you.
It's great to be here. I want to thank everybody for this great honor. I thank all the Board of Ed members for putting their support in me. It truly is a great honor to be the name of the next superintendent of schools in Trumbull, Connecticut. This is something that is very exciting for me. I'm really looking forward to getting to know Trumbull Public Schools so much better, getting to see what makes Trumbull Schools such a great place to learn and grow as a student, getting to know the staff, the parents, the students, the community as a whole. As a father of three children myself and an educator for the past 24 years, I truly appreciate what a quality education can do for all students. So I'm really looking forward to being able to not just look at the academic side. The academic side is incredibly important to me, and it's really our mission, but also making sure that we pay attention to the extracurricular side, which I know is alive and vibrant here in Trumbull. The extracurricular side, from sports to music to all the different programs that we offer, really do help round out our children and give them opportunities to really explore things that you can't necessarily do in the classroom. So I'm truly passionate about all those things. I'm looking forward to working with all the members that I spoke to, spoke about before. And again, it's just, it's a great pleasure, a great honor, and thank you again very much.
Thank you. We can.
Just to tip it out, I can add something. As I mentioned in my report, I went to Kanan High School yesterday with 12 other superintendents and the governor. Ironically, six of the 12 had heard and had known Dr. Marty, as I call him, okay? And all had rave things to say about him. Objective, fair, reasonable, very knowledgeable, dynamite skill set, and gets along with people and will reach out to make anything he can to enhance the school system. And I think the board, and I told you this, you send to ask the, what did you hear? And I heard one word. It was fabulous. And I wish you the very, very best. I think you'll be a great fit for the Trumbull Public Schools in the town of Trumbull, and welcome you aboard.
Okay, and I just have one extra comment. I want you to know, Dr. Semmel, we have a strong teaching staff, a strong staff in all our buildings. We have energetic and knowledgeable students and a cooperative parent community, so I think you will enjoy being here. It's a great place to be. Loved it, spent my career here, so I can tell you that. We have great people in town, so lots of good luck, and thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our action items. First action item is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting. I'm going to need a motion for that.
Jackie, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on 7/14/2020.
I'll need a second.
I can second that.
Scott Care, second. Okay, anyone with a comment? Are they okay? If anyone has an adjustment to make? No? Okay, let me get an approval. Mike Ward?
Yes.
Yes, Scott Care?
Yes.
Tim Gallo?
Yes.
Marie Petiti?
Yes.
Jackie Norso?
In favor.
And Lieutenant Tifanelli, in favor. Okay, that's unanimous for the minutes. Next, it's personnel. Mr. Isadore?
Thank you. There's just one item on the personnel agenda tonight, and that's the appointment of a house principal, okay? Christopher Siano, who happens to live in Trumbull. He's joining our school, this should be very, very well. I think he may be on Zoom, so maybe, I don't know, Chris, are you there?
Bill Chen, can you tell? Mr. Chen?
Yes, I'm looking.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Bill's looking. I will tell the public that he started out as an English teacher at Darian High School and was there for four years. He also went to Fairfield, Roger Ludlow High School, Fairfield Ludlow High, and he was there for 15 years teaching English, and he was also with Nez-Zeck Steering Committee on several locations, but more importantly, he was a really, a real good fit for us, having served two years as an assistant principal at Newtown High School, in the same position he's taken over here. And when I talked to the superintendent, Lori Martrigas, she said, grab him, you'll lose him. And we talked to other people, certified and non-certified, these three others who had rave recommendations for him, and I think that he will had rave recommendations for him, and I think that he will form a solid team with Mark, okay, up at the high school. And we welcome him. I don't know, Bill is on?
Uh, there's a Chris Siano and a Chris M. in attendance.
Yeah, that's the one we know.
Okay, he's coming in. I just promoted him.
Okay, good, thank you.
Hello, I'm here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. I introduced you to the board, mentioned where you're at, Darien and Fairfield, and particularly Newtown High School. Have any comments to the board?
I just want to say thank you very much. I'm really excited to be there. It's been a great two days just kind of meeting people and getting myself set up, and I'm excited to start my career in Trumbull.
Welcome aboard and much good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, our next action item is the approval of the non-affiliate salaries. Mr. Isabna and Attorney Dugas is here.
Thank you. I think the cover sheet describes, this is a yearly annual process the board goes through. It gives the background onto what is looked at in recommending raises. When you turn the page, you will see that it really only affects non-central office people, such as Paris, who are our signing aides, OT PTR therapists, behavior analysis, which is a teacher, cap tier aides, and our webmaster puts everything on our website, okay? Their raises are very minimal, okay? Some 0.6%, others 1.75%, but that's the range, as far as I can, when I figured this out with Mr. Cameron's help, okay? Also, I'll take over after the board approves that part and talk about the central office non-affiliates, which is a little more elaborate because of past history, okay? So I would ask the board if you make a motion to accept or to vote on the non-central office salaries A through E.
Okay, Mr. Care, do you want to do that?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the raises for non-central office personnel as presented by the superintendent.
I need a second. Mrs. Petiti, seconds. Okay, all in favor?
I am.
Or is there, before we do that, does anyone have a question on this or wanted to ask Mr. Isabna a question about this? Does anyone have a question? No? Okay. Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Care?
Yes, in favor.
Tim Gallo?
Yes, in favor.
Yes, Marie Petiti? Jackie Norso?
Yes, in favor.
Lucinda Timpinelli, yes, in favor. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'll hand in the central office non-affiliates. As you know, we won't be doing item D because that's unfilled at this present time because Al, as I mentioned in my personnel.
Good evening. I was asked to share with you the request from the executive assistant to the superintendent, which is of course the case, and the secretary to the superintendent, which is Lauren, the request for an increase. Everybody's familiar with them and knows the wonderful job they do. They basically work very hard, and I can tell you as board council, anytime I do, I think they're both just terrific about responding and assisting. They, as you know, as I believe you know, they have not received, they did not receive an increase for the last fiscal year. And they're looking for, in addition to the similar increase to what the secretary received, which was a 2.5% increase, an additional increase to make up for that year ago, they did not receive an increase. They, there were also concerns that they expressed that their compensation, at least in the case of Lauren, is below secretaries in the system, for example, secretary to the assistant superintendent of schools. So they're looking for an adjustment to bring them up to those levels. We, you know, certainly, there's no question that an increase is in order. I just want to give you a little bit of factual information to help you to analyze where they are currently. Denise is at 3396 an hour, right? The highest ranking position, which is wage grade five in the task bargaining unit, which is the payroll person, Debbie McTano, is at, with the 2020-21 increases at 3383, okay? So Denise currently is just slightly above that particular position. In Lauren's case, her current salary is at 2989. And again, that puts her below the wage grade four position, which is the assistant superintendent secretary. So just wanted to give you some relative information. Mrs. Timpinelli and I were having a conversation on the way in about an additional equity adjustment as part of that, and I think our conversation was essentially wanting to bag it back.
Okay. Okay, so what are you recommending, Attorney Dugas? Tell us to, are you recommending the 2.5 increase?
Absolutely. I think you ought to give that to them for the 2021 year.
Because they did not receive their raise last year, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And while I'm in favor of it, I think we ought to consider an equity adjustment to properly position them relative to other folks in the district. Again, I think we just need a little bit more conversation around that, exactly what that should look like.
Okay. All right. Okay, I'm going to need a, a motion for now.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that the superintendent's executive assistant and secretary receive salary increases of 2.5% commensurate with other, other staff at that level. And that we approve that this evening with further discussion regarding an equity adjustment.
I need a second.
I'll second it. Jackie's second it.
Jackie Norso, seconds. Okay, anyone with a question for Attorney Dugas? On this, okay? And we will discuss what you said further, okay, when you have more information for us. Okay, all in favor? Mike?
Yes.
Okay, Scott Care?
Yes, in favor.
Tim Gallo? Tim?
I am in favor.
Okay. Marie Petiti? Jackie Norso?
In favor.
And Lucinda Timpinelli, yes, in favor. Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead, proceed, Attorney Dugas.
Okay, the next item, I was asked to prepare a contract for Dr. Jonathan Budd. Dr. Budd has been with by the district, I believe, five years. He is working without a contract. He has not had a contract, which is unusual and not advisable for an assistant superintendent. The market is, I'm sure you are aware of, for assistant superintendents as well as superintendents is very tight, very competitive. Dr. Budd currently earns less than the high school principal. And, and certainly, an adjustment is in order. He had requested an increase to 199,000 plus a $7,000 annuity for a total compensation of 206. I've looked at the numbers and I believe that that's a reasonable request relative to the market that you're in for an assistant superintendent, particularly given additional duties and responsibilities taken on, including the fact that we reduced the assistant superintendent position. I have gone back and forth with Dr. Budd in terms of the terms of the contract. I am comfortable with the terms that we've arrived at so far in terms of sort of the boilerplate stuff that goes into the assistant superintendent contract and benefits and things of that nature. So I would recommend it to Dr. Budd.
Okay, I'm going to need a motion for this one.
So can, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I'm sorry, I've been having some technical difficulties with my Wi-Fi here, but I would like to make the motion to approve, approve the contract for the assistant superintendent, Dr. Jonathan Budd.
Okay, and that motion was being made by Tim Gallo?
And Jackie, Jackie Norso will second it.
Jackie Norso, seconds. Okay, anyone with a question for Attorney Dugas? I have, I have a question, Attorney Dugas. Did he get a raise before this?
He certainly did not get one last year.
Okay, we knew raises before that we know about.
I believe there was one adjustment, but I'm not, I don't know the history exactly. But I do know that he is below the high school principal.
Okay.
And his assistant superintendent, that's, you know, unusual if not unacceptable.
Correct. Okay, anyone else with a question? Mrs. Petiti?
So I just want to make a comment. I worked with Dr. Budd on curriculum and policy for five years. I've had all those committees. I have seen the work professionalism he has been, and I can just state that Trumbull Public Schools are very fortunate to have him.
And I have to agree with Mrs. Petiti. I worked on curriculum with Dr. Budd also, and he's done a marvelous job there.
Lucinda, if I could say something?
Yes, you can.
Something I also worked, I worked with Dr. Budd as a principal in our elementary school, so I was, worked with him where he was, you know, sort of my supervisor and boss, and I enjoyed especially getting such PD that I really didn't get in the past. Jonathan approved sending me to Columbia to do the literacy training, and I, I really appreciated that, and he saw that it was just as important for the principals to have the PD that their teachers were going to have. So I have to say that was a good way to think about the, how that our staff, be it the principal or a teacher, is the best potential and person we can do to bring to the children.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to take the vote. Mr. Ward?
Yes, in favor.
Scott Care?
Yes, in favor.
Tim Gallo?
Yes, in favor.
Marie Petiti? Jackie Norso?
Yes, in favor.
Lucinda Timpinelli, in favor. Okay, thank you. That's unanimous in favor. Okay, anything else, Mr. Dugas?
No, that's all I have.
Okay. Great. Mr. Isabna, is there anything that?
Uh, no, I, Dr. Budd is going to talk about the calendar. Remember during my superintendent's report, I mentioned that, see, sometimes, a lot of times, changes, guidelines, et cetera. When Jonathan presents this too, you'll notice that on the annual school calendar, 180 days is no longer in effect. It's 177.
Thank you, Mr. Dugas.
177. Three first days of school, September 1, 2, 3, are now PD days, professional development. First day of school for students, as of right now, and if something should change, it'll be September 4. But that's why, I just want to emphasize, that's what happens when you have, you know, Hartford getting involved in local, um, school districts.
Okay, so now we will go on to the approval of the revision of the 2020-2021 school calendar, Dr. Budd.
Sure. Thank you all very much. It's a pleasure to work here, and I enjoy working every day with you, more than one day, so yeah. I want to just bring this revised 2020-21 calendar to your attention. As Ralph said, there were a variety of ways we could suggest we revise the calendar, but our staff, primarily our teachers and administrators, but also our parent educators, will strongly benefit and voice the need for the most professional development they can prior to the start of the school year. If you look at the calendar as we already have it, August 27th, 2031st, we're already scheduled as teacher PD days. We are able to convert three student days to additional teacher PD days. So that's represented in the red, September 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. And then we also have the opportunity to do something special on Friday, September 4th, which is to have a first day of school just for our students who are new to the buildings, pre-k, kindergarten, grade six and grade nine, because it's difficult for them to have typical orientations like they normally would. And then the full first day of school for all students would be Tuesday, September 8th. We have at least three topics that will be very important during this professional development. Of course, distance learning and all the things that go into it, the social and emotional needs of kids, and our staff coming back from the situation we had in the spring, and predominant of everything else, the health and safety protocols that have to be implemented. I should say that with agreement, if you approve this calendar with our parent educator association, our parent educators would work full PD days on September 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. So that would be a strong opportunity to develop their skill set for going into the fall. So we would recommend this year is a very strong alternative, and we could publicize it to the community after your vote tonight. I would like a motion to accept the calendar as presented.
Okay, Mr. Ward makes the motion. I need a second.
I'll second that, John.
Okay, and just one question, Jonathan. Who was in on this meeting that you changed all these days?
Well, this calendar revision was based on central office looking at what other districts have done, which is essentially this area. Now that you, hoping that you approve the calendar, we will get together with representatives from the professional development evaluation committee, representatives from the parent educators to actually plan what these days would look like, although there may be some changes from the state about what September looks like. So we're in a, we're in a kind of unusual mode here, but we did consult what other districts have done. This is in line.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. And anyone else have a question to Dr. Budd on this? No? Okay. Mike Ward?
Yes.
Okay. Scott Care?
Yes, in favor.
Okay, Tim Gallo? Tim Gallo? I'll come back. Marie Petiti?
Yes, in favor.
Jackie Norso?
In favor.
Lucinda Timpinelli, in favor. Tim?
I?
Yes?
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. You in favor of the change? Tim? Tim? All right, Tim?
Yes.
Then he's there.
I am in favor.
It's 5:20 and we don't know yet, and then he comes back on?
He did come back on.
I'm back on. I'm on, and I am in favor.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Okay. That's great. Okay, we'll move on. He did not. Okay, our next. Okay, approval of the revision. The next is E, the 2021 planning update, student enrollment.
Yes, so our goal tonight is to give the board and the public a strong update on where we are with K-12 enrollment, as well as some proposals I've come forward as superintendent and I, or some additional FTE based on the numbers you'll see. I appreciate Mrs. Lahaney's suggestion. We could work on getting something out with the first board agenda posting Thursday prior. Just remember the numbers that you see tonight are representative of today's enrollment, which goes up and down as the days go. We're just pausing to advance the slide if you want. Okay, so I am not going to repeat the, all the information that's the same as that last meeting, but I will observe that you have first many slides here on K-5 enrollment, and then we'll get to secondary. You have guidelines for kindergarten, 20 students a section, grades one and two, 22 students a section, grades three and five, 25 a section. We talked last time about how our enrollment has adapted based on COVID-19. And like last time, what we're monitoring in enrollment is where a section K-5 is one or two students below or above where there might be a section change. So as we go through tonight's presentation, I've put in red noteworthy changes, okay? If a number has just changed by a couple, but it has nothing to do with a section change, you're not going to see that in red. But the red are things for your particular notes. So if you look at the next slide, which is our current K-5 enrollment at Booth Hill, you'll see that from a sectioning point of view, we're at exactly the same place we were at the last meeting. We still in kindergarten and grade one at Booth Hill are, I won't say, on the cusp of going up another section, but currently we're holding in 24 sections at Booth Hill. but currently we're holding at 24 sections at Booth Hill. When we get to Daniel's Farm, you'll see the first indication of something in red. Daniel's Farm, grade 2, is getting on the cusp of one more section. That was not the case two weeks ago. Daniel's Farm, grade 3 and 4 are still on the cusp of one less section there. So of our six elementary schools, this is the one where there's the most in play at this point. Potentially one more grade 2, potentially one less grade 3 and 4. If you go to Frenchtown, there are no notable changes from two weeks ago. Those sections are not on the cusp at all, and there's no changes there. But Jane Ryan, we do have two changes to report from two weeks ago. We have moved over the threshold of kindergarten and grade 3. So, and that actual number for kindergarten of 61 has gone to 62, since we did this presentation about 3 o'clock this afternoon. So there's no doubt that four sections, not three, are necessary for Jane Ryan kindergarten. And at grade 3 Jane Ryan, whereas we have been holding at 49 students for a long time, which was two sections, we're now at 51 firm students there. So Jane Ryan, which two weeks ago had 20 sections scheduled, now clearly will need 22 sections. And at Middlebrook, there is also a change to report. This was referenced in one of the inherent comments. We have tripped the threshold over on grade 3 for 101 students. So a fifth section is necessary at Middlebrook for 26 total sections at Middlebrook. Tashula, there are no changes to report. The sections there are not on the cusp in any way. And so no changes from last time. In summary of K-5, I've given you a couple new charts. First of all, the first summary shows in red that we've gone up one in kindergarten. That's the Jane Ryan section. We still have a couple of places that that could grow. But grade 3 has actually moved up two sections, both at Jane Ryan and Middlebrook. And that's not a huge surprise because the board changes the guideline from grade 2 to grade 3. So that's where there's more likely to be some plus. So whereas two weeks ago, we had 140, excuse me, 139 scheduled sections, we now are at 142 scheduled sections. And we have narrowed the range. If things fall one way, that could go as low as 140. If it falls another way, it could go as high as 145. Somebody said, could it go higher than 145? That would be very unlikely. That would mean 15, 20 students showing up at one school in one grade. So this is a pretty good prediction at this point. And then if you look at the next slide, a board member asked last time if I could show year to year. Okay, so this slide shows where our enrollment was the last day of school in June, and where our enrollment is right now. So you will see, we are just shy 101 students elementary. I'll be back here in a month. My strong prediction is you'll be right on target. Because I looked at where this board was last year at this time when Superintendent Chowthing presented it. And the threshold was further apart than 101, and you made it. So I will tell you that between yesterday and today, we received 20 new potential registrations. Now that's K-12, but I do believe you'll hit it. At the bottom of the page, I just want to say we have 56 elementary students in the enrollment process. As I said last time, there are people who express interest in Trumbull Public Schools but cannot prove residency. So those 56 don't always arrive, but some of them do. And we are based on this developing the specialist assignments. Because an elementary school needs 25 sections covered for art, music, and PE versus 20. You know, we use some of those specialists over at Tech X. So by the time I'm back here, the first August meeting, I'll have more information on where the specialists have landed. And you did reserve money in your budget for some partial additional art, music, or physical education. And that art relates to a contractual change in the amount of minutes per art. So I just want to pause here and say, that is the presentation K-5. And as promised, we wanted to give you an update for grades 6 to 12. I would point out that the reason we're doing this presentation 612 is to mitigate what happened in prior years, where we ended up with very large class sizes and the year began and it was hard to know how we got there. So Ralph and I decided that adding grades 6 to 12 to this presentation would give the board more information. And it will lead to some suggested FTE increases. So moving from the grade K to 5 summary, I thought I would start with the summary of 612. We are already very close in enrollment 612 to where we left in June. Hillcrest is just shy 18 kids. Madison is shy 93. Trumbull High is already up 67. That is partially due to a large 8th grade class that left Madison and has gone to Trumbull High. But the total secondary is just off 44. Now keep in mind, the K-5 slide was ju, off 101. So we're much narrower here. If you look at the notes, we have 20 secondary students in the enrollment process. So that will move the needle off 44. And another important thing is we have 20 secondary students who have been enrolled, but they're still in the scheduling process. So we're gonna show you the numbers of, say, what our class size looks like in math. The 20 students who haven't been scheduled are not enrolled in those classes because a counselor, especially at the high school, needs to meet with them and determine where they should be placed. But again, as we go through, things that we want to chat more about are in red. If you look at grade 6 on the next page, our areas, language arts, mathematics, reading, science, social studies. I show the class size range as of today for Hillcrest and Madison. And we would represent to you that is a very good class size at the moment. It can accommodate the more students who come in. And I just want to point out that number of 16, you might say, why do we have a class of 16 if another one is 23? That's our high advanced math class in grade 6, free algebra. And that might grow by one or two more, but it is a different track. Notice the note there, world languages, phys ed, and unified arts are still being scheduled. We're going to talk a little bit later about a world language need we perceive at the middle school level, and I'll come back to it here. But Hillcrest grade 6 Spanish is inching up into an area we would say it necessitates some more support. But we'll talk about that in another minute. It connects to another grade. Now if you look at grade 7, as we schedule students right now, we have some class sizes that in our judgment and recommendation to you are too high. So Hillcrest right now, in language arts and social studies, but it's language arts that's high, is at the 23 to 28 class size range. And I think we have a shared agreement that it is very hard to do certain things in language arts with 28th, 7th graders. And we may have 20 or 30, 40 more of that by the time we get to September. And we are really over the verge of what I could recommend is an appropriate class size there. So that's why that's in red. We also at Hillcrest, with current staffing, can only have 31 or 32 students in each reading class. And our curriculum does not support 31 or 32 students in a reading class. Actually, our classrooms are not sized for that, and that's before COVID began. But we'll have a proposal to solve this in a minute. We're just identifying the problem. And our mathematics classes are similarly high at Hillcrest with a high range of 27. We actually have three at 27. So to solve this, we would suggest the next page to you. The Hillcrest grade 7 math class size could be fixed with a .4 math higher. And we wanted to show what the exact impact would be, would bring those class sizes down from 27 to the mid 20s, around 24. We still have students who will come to Hillcrest grade 7 the next month, but at least they'll have places to sit. And then Hillcrest grade 7 language arts and reading can be reduced with a 1.0 FTE. And that would still, by the way, have somewhat large class sizes. I just talked about how 25, 26 is inching upward on where we want them to be. But it certainly is better than 28, 31, 32. Now to look at grade 8 for a second, because there are some connections here. The middle schools have scheduled grade 8. You'll see a note, they're still scheduling phys ed and unified arts. But to some degree, that's because unified arts, it depends on what a student signs up for, for his strings, et cetera. The most prominent thing you'll notice on this page is that mathematics at Hillcrest, with the current staffing, has to have four classes of 35 and one of 34, which in addition to being quite educationally inappropriate, is outside our guidelines and outside the contract for all good reasons. And then world languages, and that's in the grade 8 Spanish, is sitting at 29. So with the enrollment we have today, we would strongly recommend that the board support the proposal on the next page, which is to help this situation at Hillcrest. The grade 8 math class size can be reduced with .6 higher. And remember on the prior slide, I said grade 7 can be helped with a .4 math higher. So that comes together obviously for a full-time equivalent. That would move the dial downward from 35 max to 24 max. Certainly not a small class size, given our curriculum, given what we'll be doing in classrooms in the fall, but appropriate. And then Hillcrest grade 8 Spanish can be reduced with a .4 higher. That would move those classes that are large at 29 to 25. And we would then recommend an additional .2 that would alleviate the grade 6 Spanish problem in the low 30s, to move that to 22 to 25. Grade 6 Spanish is a class that's taught every other day. That's why a .2 higher has more of an effect there. You may have questions on the middle school, but I wonder if I could just talk about the high school briefly, where we are with that. The need we have at the high school, and remember, we have 60, 70 more kids now than we did in June, and there more are coming, is in the physical education area. The graduation credits have changed for the class of 2023. And whereas in the past, they had to have 1.7 wellness credits, now they need 2.0 wellness credits. And that's true of our, next year's freshmen and sophomores. Now, we have not increased FTE in that department this year, and we're feeling the effects. If you look at the next page, our current eight FTE teachers, and I think this is helpful for people who may not see, know how health and phys ed are distributed, they have to be 100% every year of grade 9, 10, and 11, 12 students. But the 9th and 10th graders are taking more rigorous and more credits. And the 11th and 12th are still in the former requirements. So the, the high school has worked very hard on this schedule. The health and PE classes are often wrapped around science labs that students take, so they kind of make a interlocking piece for kids. And so to that extent, there is not an exact average that's applied in every class. So if you look at the next slide, phys ed 9, that's an easy one to talk about. 22 students in a class, and the high end of it is 25. But our problem becomes on the next page, with PE 10 and 11. Although the average looks fine, the range is a totally unacceptable low 40s. And we simply cannot have a phys ed class in the low 40s. And also note is that except for one period of the day, we have four phys ed classes in the gymnasium during the same period. Safety is paramount. And this board, from a liability perspective and a supervision perspective, simply cannot have 120, 130 students in phys ed, to say nothing of COVID-19. And I've also noted, periods 1 and 2, the gymnasium is also used for a 5th class adapted PE, students with significant special needs. So often in those periods, a 5th group goes to the weight room. A .4 higher in physical education will relieve this. We actually have, without being overly specific here, some part-time physical education teachers at other levels of the system, where this .4 could be reasonably added to. I'm sure you have questions, but just a couple summary slides. The total K-12 summary now, at this point year to year, is represented here. When we left last year, we had 6,686 kids. 500 and some out of them graduated, a bunch more coming into kindergarten. And as of today, 6,541, 145 shy. Again, we'll see where we are in two weeks. I can nearly guarantee in a month, we'll have surpassed that. We're not declining in enrollment by any means. And then finally, the FTE proposal is on the last page. 3.0 additional elementary are reflective of the two Jane Ryan classes we mentioned and the one Middlebrook. We talked about the Hillcrest mathematics, the Hillcrest language arts reading, that's one certification area, the Hillcrest Spanish, and the THS physical education. You'll remember when the budget was approved, we talked about putting a limited amount into reserve for negotiations area, so that we could apply it best where the need is, right? It, it is not sound the last week of August to be hiring in these areas, particularly the specialized secondary areas, which is why with full disclosure, we're here tonight. We do not believe we're going to have other FTE needs at the secondary level, but we do have these. So I'd be happy to answer questions you have.
So Jonathan, you know I'm a big advocate of never having a significant math, having been a math teacher forever. Well, I, I just don't understand. I know there was that discrepancy where Madison was 100 about students. So it looks like the enrollment's gone down, but how come they can't acknowledge?
Well, at each middle school, to different degrees, there were some staff attritions as a result of the budget. So I know it's not the one you're talking about, that happens to be on my mind. We reduced a .4 science.
The numbers are way better, hopefully.
Yeah. I will say at Hillcrest, they were, they were higher last year in every subject area.
I remember we were 28.
Yeah. I mean, 35, and we've never seen, we can't teach 35.
No, I, I absolutely agree. But even the language arts, they?
We have met with both sets of middle school principals and want to appropriate the high school administration. And it's not that there's any flex in order to say, oh, could one middle school give up a little on the other? There is not that. When we have people travel, and we do it when it's appropriate, we really lose a period of teaching just for them to travel.
Jonathan, I have a question. Of the instructional chairs at two middle schools, do they have caseloads?
Well, those positions have been eliminated, so they're all teaching five periods.
Everyone is teaching five periods?
Yes.
Okay, so they do have caseloads?
Yes, the whole caseload.
So that's what I was gonna add, so I, that's right.
Number?
Even with them, you have big class?
In general education, every, every teacher is teaching a full load.
Andrew, a quick question, the 6.0 FTEs you're talking about. Where are the questions? This is what, do we have money for 6.0, or do we have money?
We believe in talking to Mr. Cameron earlier today, that there is reasonable money in reserve for negotiations and also in the differentials between some positions where we've had retirements since your budget was adopted.
When do we plan to hire these 6.0?
I would say as soon as a reasonable advertisement can be given. In some of these cases, for example, at the elementary, there will be people recalled from the non-renew list. In most of the secondary areas, there will be new postings.
You don't need to prove it, I'm chairman of the employee.
No, you can do that. But you also have people that you, that were eliminated. I know there was a Spanish teacher that was eliminated. She goes on recall then?
That particular person is not in the position, but we, yeah.
Oh, if that were?
If that weren't the case.
Okay, and when you say .4 department share for wellness, at the high school, they already have that, these PE enrollments.
That's right. We just represented on here that that's part of the 6.0, exactly.
Oh, okay. You don't need that, you already have one. I don't know about the art music, but I do know that you have one already there. So, wow, I, I'm a little concerned about the time of the year that we're looking for people to hire, except that there are people that we are falling back is different.
Anticipating this last week, we already put a feeler out just to get applicants for the math position, which is a more, just shortage area. We believe we have good candidates in that pool, but in the interest of full transparency, we wanted to bring it to the board this evening. It doesn't seem like a far stretch that you're not gonna want classes of 35.
No, but it's very difficult to find a round teacher or a regular teacher of .4, or .2, or .7. It's very difficult to do that.
Well, I'm sorry, yes. No question, but as Jonathan pointed out, there could be some shift. But as Jonathan pointed out, there could be some shifts with a point six currently employed and make he or she a one point oh in four. Now, the other thing is, you save money on hiring an in-house person with benefits, because they're already getting some benefits.
Well, if you're looking at that, that's a different issue. You can do that, that's.
I have one more question. August, May, we have a, like the old form, a flat side.
Yes.
And then these four.
We're gonna complement this presentation with new practice.
This is an excellent presentation. I would be glad to add something like this.
I'm just glad you put six to twelve in here. I'm glad you put six to twelve in.
We can't have the problems, in my judgment, Ralph's judgment, of prior years, where we found out after, when parents went to open house, that they couldn't fit in the classroom, right? So we really worked with all the administrators to say, put all the issues up here, and then let's do it with some solutions now.
Anyone else with a question? Mr. Gallo, Mr. Kerr, okay, Mr. Kerr?
Yeah, Jonathan, thanks very much for a good presentation. I just had a couple of clarifying questions. When you, when you say, we're gonna hit that target, right? When six seventeen enrollment, the end of year enrollment, is that, was that what we budgeted? Like, did we have budgeted enrollment that differed from how we ended the year, or did we just carry that forward?
The budgeted enrollment is yet a different thing, because that rolls up all the grades except kindergarten. And it makes some assumptions about kids coming in or out from inter-district programs that don't always prove true. And without getting overly specific, we have some inter-district programs that have waned in popularity over time, and they come back to Trumbull Public Schools. Kindergarten is our most volatile, and I think it's particularly true this year because in the March-April range, parents just didn't know. And we have had parents in the past few weeks who have withdrawn their children from kindergarten and said, I'm gonna keep them home one more year, which is their choice. You're not likely to do that at grade four, but we've seen that with kindergarten more. But now, as I say, in the past twenty-four hours, we've had twenty more register. And it might be that they're very supportive of our reopen plan and say, okay, well, then I think with the various options, I'm willing to sell out child. So a little bit more flexible.
I just, my point in asking that question is just that I think, at some point, as we go forward over the next several meetings, we're gonna wanna see those comparisons, whatever was budgeted.
Excellent.
Because we want to know how far off we are from now, particularly with the, you know, the recommended FTEs. Because we never really saw a full budget presentations, and we don't, we don't have a book to refer to to say, okay, well, if we had these six or whatever it is.
K five is very simple, I can tell you. Your budget was built on one hundred and forty-two sections K five. It's gonna be one hundred and forty. And now we have one forty-two. Yeah, so going forward on this, the six twelve, just include that. That doesn't put up, that'd be great.
Does anyone else have a question? Mr. Gallo, Mrs. Norso, T V, anybody else?
No.
Just wanna add one thing.
I have nothing further.
Okay, go ahead.
Tim, go ahead.
No, I have nothing further at this time.
Oh, okay.
Jonathan and I will be talking, because now, when we sit down tomorrow, and Thursday, we're gonna equate those parents' input with regard to whether they're gonna send their child to school and if it'll have an impact on this. Because remember, with the survey, we said, now, some parents are saying, I'm not gonna send my child to school. I'm gonna homeschool, home instruction.
Okay, but what if they decide that now, and then, you know, January comes, December, then they're gonna send them back, and then you don't.
That's always the issue.
The State Department issued specific guidance on just that point the other day. We're preparing a document for parents who are interested in it because there is a fine but really important line between homeschooling and then exercising the temporary remote learning that the state has as part of its plan. But briefly, because people are watching, homeschooling, which anybody in Connecticut can do at any time, is simply withdrawing your children from school. And in the state of Connecticut, the school districts don't monitor that. You, as a parent, have the obligation to implement a curriculum. That's on you, and you've withdrawn them. They don't count toward our numbers, they don't count toward our funding from the federal or state governments. More likely is that parents may say, we want to exercise the temporary remote learning, which is, they're still part of the Trumbull Public Schools, but we want some learning. But the state has issued guidance on parameters that districts can set around that, which I have to say are pretty helpful, so we're working on those as well.
For example, you can, can come back anytime you want. One of our parameters may be, you can only come back in semester, something like that.
Okay, so before we, I guess we're gonna need a little bit more information. You have to look at these different scenarios, right? So you may, I don't know what's gonna happen. I don't know if we, I don't wanna approve six, and then, you know, need six, and, you know, none of us wanna do that. We wanna make sure we have enough money to do this. A little worried.
Well, take the math, for example. We can't have those thirty-five kids in five different classes rostered to a teacher. So we must have another math teacher to roster them to. Proportionately, some people might exercise their remote learning, but they might come back at a certain point. Your guidelines and your policy, as well as the teacher's contract in some cases, would suggest that we really do have to go forward. Now, if we see dramatic changes in the next week, I think from what we're seeing, you'd have to have, say, in those math or language arts areas, disproportionate numbers of kids come out of those classes.
No, sir. I thought we said earlier that if they don't need our approval in order to move forward, at least so long as they stay within that budget, they have it in the reserve.
Do the best you can.
Well, we appreciate that. The other thing, and again, it's a long shot. As the board knows, I've asked the first select one if we could use the balance for the twenty eighteen to twenty school year into the legacy accounts, and now end that, and we send it over to where you get it in the weekend report. That's always a little pushy. It's in the legacy, but with your approval, depending on where the need is monetarily, you may squeeze a little off.
Okay, thank you for the information. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Bud. Next is the curriculum committee report, Mr. Ward.
Yes, Madam Chair, we met this past week with Dr. Bud and several teachers from the high school. And then turning back to Dr. Bud, it's Dr. Bud with two linear algebra and the Secret Life of the American Musical.
These are really exciting new text proposals. Briefly, the first, linear algebra, is for our most advanced grade twelve class. So these are students who have taken AP Calculus B C as juniors, and then are in multi-variable calculus or Calc III as seniors. And now, with a new arrangement with the University of Connecticut, they can do the multi-variable calc part in the fall of their senior year, and then linear algebra, which is another college course in the spring semester, and get for that senior year six total college credits. So you've seen Mrs. Capabianco on numerous occasions. She came to the curriculum committee, fabulous teacher, fabulous program, and it's a strong testament to all the work they've done in math from kindergarten all the way up through grade twelve. So because we achieved some savings on some prior textbook purchases, this one comes in at slightly more than twenty-two hundred dollars, and it is the book UConn requires for us.
So Jonathan, can I just, I think she said that actually the first course, multi-variable calculus.
That's true.
So they're gonna get up to seven credits, which is, from a point of view of fairly paying tuition, that is a big, you say, that along with, seven college credits. And I think she also mentioned one of only two district students. So I was very, you know, we all.
We all. Okay, the next one is, do you wanna speak about that motion with the two of them?
Yeah, last, a whole year ago, when the board, and perhaps it was the prior board, who voted to increase arts offerings at the high school with the new graduation requirements, increased drama offerings in a variety of ways. And one new course was theater exploration, The American Musical. And we did not have sufficient enrollment last school year to run it, but we do have sufficient enrollment this school year. So Mrs. Spillane, who's one of the drama teachers at the high school, is developing the curriculum this summer. And this text is a clear winner among other programs who have a course like this, Secret Life of the American Musical, How Broadway Shows Are Built. This is not the only thing they'll read, because they'll be doing a lot of primary source reading of the materials. Not a performance course. This isn't actually making the musical, but it's studying it, and really exciting. At a future meeting, you'll see the curriculum guide, but right now, we need to get books purchased for all enrollment, and this one comes in at a slightly less than four hundred dollars.
Okay, I'm gonna need a motion, Mrs. T V, to make a motion to accept this.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to accept two new courses, the linear algebra and the application, the physician, and the secret life of the American musical.
I need a second.
Tim.
Mr. Ward, seconds? Okay, any other questions? No? Okay. All in favor, Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mrs. Petiti?
Yeah.
Mrs. Norso?
Yes, in favor.
And we'll send it to Benelli, yes, in favor. Okay. Man in favor, thank you, Dr. Bud. Okay, receiving file is our next, Mr. Ward.
I will make the motion.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.